Well, we're not going to fall asleep here.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
We're not going to fall asleep here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Let's get one.
Yeah.
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 Hey, how are you?
Good.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
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 Well, hello.
How are you doing?
Thank you.
There.
Well, hello, here.
Yes, there we go.
Yeah.
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 Hey, what's up?
Great.
Yeah.
I was about to say, I was going to get some.
Yeah.
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 Oh, yes, it is.
Yeah.
But you said.
Yeah.
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 Have you asked like, you were given this like it just came up, Jimmy Johnson's picture?
Yeah.
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 You want to share it or do you want to tell it to everyone?
Yeah.
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 Oh, yeah.
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 I said, I'm glad you're catching this story today.
Yeah.
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 Good morning. I guess we've got hot mics right now, so get everybody head into your chair. We're fixing to call ourselves to order, please. Thank you. All right, Ms. City Secretary, everything good on your end? Okay. We're going to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order. This is a work session. It's a special session. Can you guys hear us out there okay, as long as we get right up on the mics?
Um, we are officially called to order on the city council's end. I'll go ahead and hand it over to Chairperson Fairley and ask him to call his board to order.
Okay, I'm calling to order the work session of the AEDC. Uh, seeing that some person.
Real good. You might slide that microphone closer to you. I think it's a little hard to hear. Um, well, it is a, an overcoat day, eleven degrees outside, so forgive us if we don't even take our coats off while we sit in here. I know the heat is probably working as much as it can, but we are officially called and ready to take this on. We have one item on our agenda here today. It's to receive a presentation and to discuss AEDC and an update from the chairperson. And so, item two A, I'm just going to go ahead and hand it directly over to you, Mr. Fairley, if you'll take off running.
Okay. I apologize, I'm, uh... Okay. I should turn my phone on. Okay.
Devin, you just tell me where we're trying to let go.
Yeah. I could do that while you start talking.
I'm not going to tell you. What did you do? Yes. Okay. Okay, that's better. Oh. That's a little, that's close. Uh, okay, if we're ready to get going, I would say thank you to the Amarillo City Council for having us. I say us. In the open meetings world, you don't get to talk to your partners too often about very much stuff. Uh, and while I've done most of this work, um, I think I want to just start by thanking the, my fellow board members at the AEDC. Uh, it's been a little bit of a rush, ninety days. And I've, I knew all of them, really knew Howard more than the others, but just have come to have a new appreciation and respect for, uh, guys who care about our city and things going well. So, um, and all that i- is entailed and, uh, all the people who, you know, know so much and want to tell you all about it. So, anyway, um, I appreciate you guys. Um, I just want to make two or three kind of housekeeping comments before we really get into it. These are just, uh, little things, but I think they need to be said. The first thing I just want to cover is that, um, this morning, I'm going to be candid about, um, a lot of things, EDC. Uh, I'm going to recall conversations. Uh-oh, sorry. Sorry. Is it the wrong way? I'm going to recall conversations that I've had with people. Most everything that I talk about is going to be things that I have gathered up in the first person, so I'm going to do very little. Someone told me, something someone else said. Uh, and, uh, I just want to say that I'm not going to talk about anything today that has to do with Kevin Carter's departure from the EDC. So, while I'll recall conversations we had and things he told me, he was, he was my main source of being educated about the EDC in general and about EDCs in general and the AEDC, but I just want to clarify so that no one wonders, is, is, is that the reason that, you know, Kevin and the EDC parted ways? The answer to that question, if you think of it any time today, is no. Um, I just, out of respect to Kevin, wouldn't go into those things, so just, uh, cover that off so no one wonders. I didn't intend for this to be what's become such a deep dive for me. Um, the day after you put me on this board, I called Kevin and we had the first conversation that we, um, had of many. Uh, it was very casual. I'm, I was mostly focused on Kevin and how he was doing. Um, but I began to just get educated. I, I, I was on a scale of one to ten about what I knew about the EDC, I, I wasn't even a one. I don't know if I was a zero, but I don't think I was a one. And so, it was, it began a process of, um, starting to figure things out and, um, the reality is, is as I asked questions and got answers that didn't always, you know, didn't always make sense, sometimes because I, the EDC is an ecosystem that doesn't work like anything I've ever seen in my life. And so, I would just be like, really? That's how this works in this world? Um, but also questions that didn't, you know, answers that didn't make sense. You know, we just kept going, you know, really, you know, deeper and deeper. And I got input really from a lot, a lot of people and a lot of data now, what I'm going to share with you. Um, and I feel like where we are, we've parted ways with our, with our leader. Um, he was, he was generally very well thought of, um, in our community, all around the community. I had people call me the day you appointed me, the day, I guess, the next day. Boy, I hope everything's okay with Kevin. Kevin's great. We love Kevin. Um, he was, he was well thought of and liked by, I think, most people. Um, so, you know, we've obviously gone a different direction and I feel like we owe two sets of people an explanation about what's, you know, what's, you know, what we think is going on. It's been a little bit of a, a, you know, tense six or seven months about the EDC. You know, three or four months before I was involved and, and the first group of people is you. Like, the, the council is, is kind of our, you know, is our boss, you know, like, uh, you know, you, you, you ultimately, I think, we answer to the council. And then I think we owe a, an explanation like this to our community, um, just for the simple fact that it's all their money. And you're going to hear me, you're going to hear me say that a lot of times today. Um, and I didn't want to do it twice, so, um, the cameras are here because I wanted to record this so that we can put this out to the public um, and be, you know, done all with it in, in one time. So, any questions about that, that's kind of what's happening there. The last thing I want to say before we get started is, you know, there's been a lot of consternation around the topic of the EDC for a lot of, I don't know how, it seems like a long time, six, seven months. And I really was paying almost no attention. Um, a few updates from my wife, you know, about this or that, but, but really paying very little attention. I had a couple conver- had a conversation or two with, uh, Councilman Simpson, but really very, very little and, uh... I think all that frankly has been valuable to me to see, you know, to go back and look at things that were done and things that were said and who did what, when, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, you're going to see today, this isn't really a discussion about the range. We're going to touch on the range, but the range is a minor part of this discussion. But there's, you know, a group of, you know, people that are, you know, really interested in this, not very many by looking at the crowd, but a group. And there's some people that are a little, uh, uh, too interested in what I'm going to do today. Group of people trying to get this presentation before I even give it, uh, that would like to get in front of it. And I would just say this, doing this is just a healthy, good thing. Um, I've taken an honest and being honest, a hard look at the EDC, um, but I would just ask everyone to, to kind of take a breath. There's, there's folks whose bows are drawn and arrows are pointed at what I'm going to talk about today. And I would just say that even in our own companies, we do this, we do it all the time because we want to be better and because we want to be excellent. And so, you guys have taken some heat and I would just say, as a community, if we could just listen with an open mind because, because however well the AEDC has done and the EDC has done a lot of good things in its thirty years, um, we just should want to do better. And nobody should be tense about taking, you know, a hard look. Now, now, the public and you all can judge whether this is an objective look and an honest look, like, you know, I'm, you know, open to that. But I just think this is a very good, you know, productive thing and it's something that we do all the time, you know, in our business. It's not something that we, uh, it's not something that's new. Um, okay, when I, when I started, the very first thing that, and, and one last little caveat. Because this presentation is meant for you all and the public, I'm going to cover some things that you'll say. You didn't need to tell me that. So, there's some kind of elementary things that are really intended for the public, so be patient with me in, in some of it. Don't worry, I'm not going to, I won't bore you the whole entire day, but the very first thing I started trying to do after, after talking to Kevin was just get my hands around the financials. In the first meeting that I ever talked to Kevin, my mind is, is business centric and I was trying to get my hands around the financials at, at just a, you know, really, really high level. And I just really want to start there and this is again a ve- very elementary picture, but I think it's good for the community to know. I mean, this is a fifty thousand foot. This is as elementary a budget picture as, as anyone could ever give, but I, I think it's good for the public to know kind of how the EDC works financially and then we're going to get into how it works in other ways. But basically, about thirty years ago, we voted as a community to issue a half a cent sales tax. So, every dollar that's spent in our town, a half cent goes to the EDC. And now, in this day and age, a long time ago, fifteen years ago, the number was about fourteen million, but today in twenty-four, twenty-five, that number's around twenty-five million. Um, and so, it takes in about twenty-five million dollars in income a year. It'll be twenty-six next year, it'll be twenty-six and a half the next year. It just, it just slowly grows. We spend about two and a half million dollar oper- dollars operating the EDC. So, our CEO and his team and office space and travel and conventions and meetings that we go to and meetings with, you know, prospective people who would, who were recruiting to come here, all of that adds up to about two and a half million dollars. And then the next, the next line I put on here is twelve to sixteen million dollars in project incentives. I, in my world, I would call them liabilities, but things that we've committed, projects we've committed to and made a deal with somebody to come and perform, whether it's bringing jobs or building something or growing something. And the reason that number is a range is because it changes every year depending on where those projects are in their lifetime. Sometimes they have a very expensive year or something big is coming up potentially with Albert's in twenty-twenty-five, could be a lot of money. But I said twelve to sixteen. Um, and, and I want to make a little point here that, that I'll come back to later, but I have the budget for twenty-twenty-four here with me that you guys, you know, looked at. And the operating expense part of that budget is like a budget. I would call it a budget. It's, here's all the people and here's all, it's pretty detailed. The rest of that budget, which we call the budget, is not really a budget because it's not accurate. And no one's doing anything nefarious or wrong, but that part of the budget, which is the big part of the budget, in twenty-twenty-four, I think that budget's at around twenty-two million dollars for this second thing. I may be off by a million or two, but most of the, but, and, and so, as I started kind of going through and quizzing through that and saying, okay, what's really going to happen here? Like, no one thought it was going to be twenty-two million dollars. And again, I don't think anyone did anything wrong. There's no issue there except that to our community and to our council, I, you're going to hear this theme today. I don't think very many people really know what's going on. And that part of the budget, it ju- it just isn't a budget. I said to Doug Nelson, who I'm going to, uh, I'm going to talk about a little bit later, I said, I said, Doug, this, in my world, this isn't, it's not really a budget. He said, no, no, it's not, it's not like your budget. And there are things in it that we, they're kind of the, the, this might happen, worst case. There are some things in it that this is exactly what we think is going to happen and they're, they're very accurate and there's parts of it that, that are like, well, it's kind of the range, so we, you know, kind of picked it. And sometimes we're just not sure what's going to happen. But as we manage the EDC, as you manage the EDC and as the community expects us to, uh, you know, answer to them, um, I, I think we have some work to do on what a, what a budget looks like. Now, the, the main group of people who the budget ought to be more well-known by is the board of the EDC. By the time it gets to you, you guys assume that it's in, in pretty good order. And I'm not saying anything's out of order, but it's, 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 uh, to me, it could be, you know, it could be substantially tightened up. The last entry on our fifty thousand foot budget here is what's left. I'm, I'm going to say seven, eight million dollars, um, we save. We just save. As a result, we have a lot of money in the bank. Um, we have about eighty-one million dollars in the bank. I put eighty-five on the presentation because the last time I saw the numbers, they were eighty-five, but we just found out an hour ago, we made somebody a payment and so it's down to eighty-one. But eighty, eighty-five million dollars in the bank and this year will, we may put, we may, we may put seven or eight million dollars more in the bank. We may not, and so, we got a bunch of cash, uh, and then we have about, on the books, we have about a hundred and forty million dollars in commitments, things that we have said, um, that we've made a commitment to and there's a contract in place and it says how we have to perform and what we got to pay. So, we're cash flowing up there at the top. Like, we're, this is, this thing's been run pretty conservatively. Like, we're, we're flush. That's, you know, that's good news. Um, and as a result of that, we've saved some money. Now, we owe, um, we owe supposedly more money than we, we have in the bank, but we're, we're in very good shape. My opinion about that one forty, and let me, I should have said this earlier. Please stop me anytime and make, this is going to be way boring if you let me go the whole time without asking me any questions, so, so stop me. But, but that one forty, I don't think is a real number. I think an actual number of what we've committed is probably, I don't think it's more than a hundred. I think it's, I think it's around a hundred. Might be ninety, might be a hundred and two, but, um, I think that's, uh, and where that one forty comes from is it's all the jobs we've done, excuse me, all the projects we've done and all the jobs that we said that they might produce and if they maxed out, what we would have to give them. But, but most of these things don't work out the way the contract says. And so, if you're looking for a real number, I think we have almost as much money as the bank as we owe and great cash flow. Again, fifty thousand feet. I can tell you want to ask a question, Cole.
So, you can give us a better breakdown of maybe where you're arriving at that ninety to a hundred million dollars through this report or do you want to?
Yeah, so that, that is, in my opinion, the, I guess, the hundred and forty million dollar question. That's where I started this whole thing. I didn't start out to do all this work you're going to see today. Um, I was trying to figure out like what we had to work with. Like, when I found out we had eighty-five million dollars in the bank, I said, wow, we have a lot of money in the bank. And my optimistic and offensive-minded mind starts thinking about what can the AEDC, like, what can we do? And what can we be? Like, what could we be in ten years? Like, what, 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 what substantial deals could we do? But I got to figure out the, the, the other side, which, and so, when I asked questions about the liabilities, the answer I got was, the, the technical answer is a hundred and forty. But, but as I started digging into, and what I wanted to do personally, I just wanted to model what we had to work with. I just wanted to be able to plan and fi- in, in the business world, we make plans. Like, we're not thinking about this year. Um, we thought about this year, last year, and we're thinking about five years and ten years. So, trying to get my hand around this, I thought, I'm going to model this thing and I'm going to figure out how much money we have. Like, we, we have eighty-five million dollars in the bank, we're saving seven to eight million dollars. I wasn't sure about our commitments, like, I, I was here and there with that much and I said, I, and then there's a time factor with these deals we do. When we say we did see a VMR, thousand, thousand jobs, we have a big party, you know, and celebrate, well, those thousand jobs are maybe not coming for a long time. Number one, they may never come, the thousand. Maybe it's going to be eight hundred or maybe there's two phases, um, like the seki- sechike, am I pronouncing that right?
Yeah, kaseke.
Kaseke deal, it, it's going in phases and, and on, on the list of projects, that deal says, I think, I can't remember off the top of my head, seven hundred jobs, phase one is probably two hundred. So, I'm looking at a spreadsheet that says, you know, seven hundred jobs and then I'm like, oh, wait a minute, it may never be seven hundred jobs. They're going to have to do a whole nother phase, which is probably hundreds of millions of dollars of investment, which, who knows? And so, I'm just trying to get my hands around, because what I'm thinking is, at, at the time, just guessing, I thought that one forty, I thought, I bet it's, maybe it's one twenty, maybe it's one ten. So, it would be a long discussion, Cole, but we, to answer your question, we need to go through all the projects. And this was a little where, a little flag was going off in my mind. I asked Kevin for all the projects and the jobs and like what had happened. And I got the list that you all have seen and the public has seen, every job we've done, um, first during his five-year tenure and then beyond that and then, and then a number of, of, of job, of, of jobs that that, that project's going to produce. But as I started digging into those and realizing that there was a time factor and that some of them frankly weren't even in very good shape, I just realized, I'm going to tell you this, I'll tell you this, and you're going to hear this a lot today. You, the board, does not know what our liabilities are. Today, we do not know. Now, Doug Nelson, I will say, of all the people in our community, has the best handle on it and he's got a really pretty good handle. I think if you ask Doug today, I think he's here and I'll just stop and take a minute and say, I'm so appreciative of Doug Nelson. Um, what he's been to help me in the last two- What he's been to help me in the last two weeks is, is incredible. And we just appointed him the interim CEO. Um, he's done that for us a couple of years. He's been here the longest. The guy knows every nook and cranny of the ADC. And he's a treasure to our community and I'm, I'm, I'm super thankful that he's, you know, going to be here to help us. And so Doug has his close, but I'm going to tell you, our financial people who manage our money at the city, they, I'm just telling, tell you, they don't know what that number is. And, um, um, and you got to know it if you're going to plan what we're going to be. Like you got to know where you are. There's no business person who doesn't know like, like what he's got and what's coming in and what's committed to go out. And so that's really where I started. And when I started asking questions and trying to get my hands around that and the answers were very vague and, and, and kind of, kind of mushy, not saying anything was doing anything wrong at all, but just not clear. Like I'm used to being able to ask my financial people, where are we on this? What's going to happen in ba, 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 four years? If this happens, it'll go this way. And it, it all felt a little, it just wasn't clear. And so that is really what started my journey because I felt like I had to get my hands around that. I'll tell you this 85 million, we had a conversation this morning in our board meeting. We got to manage that cash better. 85 million dollars is a lot of money. And what I noticed when I look at the financials on the EDC, on our EDC financials and that cash, we get a report, I don't know how often, I've seen it twice now. So maybe once a quarter, I don't know how often. And I make more interest on my personal money that's cash and one of the same banks that we held money than the ADC makes on their money. And granted, uh, it's a lot of money that's in the bank I'm talking about, but it's not 85 million. And so we had a little discussion about this this morning and we, we can do that more. We don't even have to come close to being aggressive, but we are leaving, I'm just going to tell you in the, in the la- we're going to look at the 15 years today. In the last 15 years, I'm going to tell you, it's millions of dollars that have been left on the table because of the way we don't manage our capital cash very well. And, um, I don't, that's not really so much the topic for the day, but, but this is where we are, big picture financial highlights. Any questions before I go on?
No, sir.
Okay. Performance highlights. I need to pause here and, and just bring everyone up to date on a couple of just details of the EDC world. The ED, I, when I say, I'm going to say EDC a lot today. When I say EDC, I'm not talking about the AEDC. I'm talking about the, uh, the Economic Development Corporation ecosystem. It's very unique. It's very, very nuanced. But the way that EDCs measure themselves primarily is by the number of jobs they produce. Now, there's a secondary way, which at times I think provides color and has some value. And that is trying to look at the economic impact that, that a group of jobs produces. I'm just going to tell you that I think that the majority of the economic impact, um, numbers and studies in the ET world, I think the majority of it is, I think the majority is bunk. And I'll get into maybe some of that, but that's not the main way that we measure it anyway. When, when I sat down with Kevin, excuse me, I called him, the first day Kevin told me in that conversation, it was a couple of hours, he told me how the EDC had performed in his tenure. He said, in my tenure, we produced 5,000 jobs, the most productive five years in the history of, the 30 year history of the EDC. The way they talk and the way they speak is in terms of jobs. And it's the, it's the purest way, it's the most accurate way to decide if, if an EDC is working. So this is a picture, a high level picture in terms of jobs of the last 15 years of our EDC. We have taken in, keep in mind, I asked Kevin, I didn't ask him, Kevin told me in that first conversation, we've produced 5,000 jobs in, in these five years. So in my mind, I was thinking five years and 15 years, probably not, probably not three times five, but you know, maybe two times five, maybe 10,000. In these 15 years, from 2010 to 24, we've taken, the EDC has taken in $290 million in tax revenues. So that's that half cent sales tax. 2010, it was 14 million. This past year is 20, a little over 25. To the number, the actual number is 292 million dollars. In that 15 years, we have realized, and I'm going to, you see my little star up there by the word realize. So I'm going, I need to explain this, but we've realized 1,500 jobs in Amarillo as a result of the EDC's work. The reason I have an asterisk by realize is because there are a couple of things you have to bring in to bring a little color. I first looked at the last five years. Like, like, again, I wasn't planning on this being a big project. I said, I'm going to look at the last five years. And I asked Kevin to begin to build me a spreadsheet and I got the first version. It's the one that all the community has seen, jobs, projects, jobs. And then I said, okay, could we, could we start with the, the first year of that job, that project? And show me what happened that first year. I want to know how much money we spent, how many jobs came that year? And then the second year, third year, fourth year, fifth year, we don't go back, gone back five years. So I just went back to 2020. And a lot of those jobs are, but, but I didn't want to know the number of jobs that we said CVMR was going to produce. I wanted to know how many jobs it had produced so far. Okay? Because we got to, we got to get away, I'm going to get to this in a minute. We got to get away from these general observations that don't turn out to be really, they just don't leave the public knowing exactly what happened. I'm not saying anyone was being dishonest or misleading anybody. And, and then after five years, I thought, we got to go, go look past five years because one, that set of five years is so young, we've, the projects we did in 24, they haven't produced any jobs. 23 hasn't hardly produced any jobs. But even projects in 2020, 2021, maybe they got a year or two of jobs they've produced, but they're going to produce more jobs. But realize jobs, um, and I realize I got to go back 15 years if I really want to understand how the ADC is going. Because I wanted to go back to jobs that were mature, that have been performing for 10 years or for 15 years. And one argument that could be made, in fact, somebody suggested that, that this would be a good idea, is that we've done some retention deals. We've paid companies money to keep, to, to, to keep jobs. And someone said, you know, you might, you might add the retention. And my, a fair observation of how the EDC has performed, you really maybe ought to add the jobs we retained, just so you know, that number would take us up to 2,000. That's around 500. The reason I didn't put that in there, I don't agree that it's, you can't not mention it. That wouldn't be honest. But the reason I don't think it's part of the discussion is that we've done retention deals that didn't produce jobs and I don't think were very good deals. I'll give you an example. We did a deal with Maxor and it had two parts. Part of it was to grow where we would pay them to bring jobs and part of it was to retain. The reality is, is Maxor is, is declining jobs in Amarillo. They're doing it on purpose. They went home for COVID and they, they didn't ever quite come back. And people like call center people and like that, like they don't need them to be in Amarillo anymore. And their jobs are shrinking. The number of employees that we're paying for, their number of employees are going down. But the retainer job we did pays them for the jobs even though they're going down. So there was an amount of jobs that they had, but the way the deal was done is if they go below that, we still pay them for the jo- so we are paying Maxor to lose jobs. I wouldn't add that to how the EDC has done. We did a deal with, um, Excel, a re- a retention project. And I, these are the questions coming to my mind. Wait, wha- Excel wasn't leaving, were they? Like, for instance, we did a deal with Quarter Horse. Quarter Horse was thinking about leaving. And we went and did a deal, I think it was, I think it was a fine deal. We, we gave them some cash and they, um, and they stayed. Okay, maybe we could count those. I, I don't know. I think that would be a fair one. But we did a deal with Excel and I said, was Excel leaving? Nope, they weren't leaving, but they were going to build a new, a new office center and they were going to build it outside of downtown. And the team in place at that time wanted them to be downtown. And so we gave them a deal to retain jobs to do their deal downtown. And the thought was if they would build and they, I don't, I can't remember what it was. I think they spent four or 500 million dollars on an office building across the street from the ballpark, kind of helped downtown. I wouldn't count that as progress for the EDC. I'm not saying it was a bad decision, good decision, but we weren't losing any jobs. We, we gave them money so that they would build where we, where that group of people wanted to build. So I, I think 1,500 is a more accurate picture. As a point of reference, we have some guidelines when we do deals with companies that we pay for the jobs that they, that they produce new. And the, let me tell you, the process is very tight. It's very good. They got to prove it. We pay them, if, if we say we're paying them for jobs over, we pay them over five years. So Tom can't do a deal and show up next year and say, I have five jobs. If he has five jobs, we pay him, if we're paying him over five years, we pay him 20% in year one, another 20% in year two, because, so he's got to keep those jobs. It's a very good process. It's very tight. But I, as a point of reference, we pay between 10 and 15,000 dollars a job. The higher paying the job, the more we pay. We've done a deal with Producer B, 5,000. So it's as low as that. But as a point of reference, I picked 12, 5. So if you take that 290 million that the ADC has taken in over 15 years, the 1,500 jobs we've produced, we've, we've invested 193,000 dollars a job. I put a few little points about the last five years together. You can't look at, I don't know what that, uh, wobbly part is right there. You can't look at the number of jobs they've realized, really. It's not a fair look because those pro- projects are developing and they will grow more jobs. But in those 10 years, excuse me, in those five years, in these last, and here's why I did this. There's a lot of, a lot of talk and people called me and said, hey, this has been amazing. You're messing this up. The last board, you know, you guys heard it all. So I just said, I'm going to look at the last five years. And the last five years, we took in 120 million dollars in, in revenues. Okay? We spent about 10 million dollars in operations, two and a half million dollars a year, about 10 million dollars. We spent about 15 million dollars on projects in those five years. So we're not talking about projects that happened long ago in those five years. So we've, we've come out of pocket about 25 million dollars. We have realized 200 jobs. Those are the jobs we have actually realized. Now the reason there's, there's two asterisks on there. One is that, that 200 doesn't include the Amazon deal. The Amazon deal is 900 jobs. They committed to five, it's been nine. I'll explain why I didn't include that in a minute. And right now I don't remember the second asterisk. When it comes back to me, I'll tell you. But that's kind of a look at the last five years. I'm just going to say, I don't think it's amazingly stellar. I, I, I don't, I don't think it needs any arrows, but, um, you know, we've, we've taken in a bunch of money and we spent a bunch of money and, and it's not that many jobs. If we counted Amazon, it's not, it's not that many jobs. We also, in the 5,000 jobs that supposedly have been produced, like we, we have projects that aren't, they're not going to happen. Like they're not going to happen. CVR isn't going to happen. It, it was a thousand jobs, 20% of, of the claim. Like it's not, it's not going to happen. And this is like a little, we need to take a little sidebar on this, this question. And the question is, what's a job? I had in my first conversation with Kevin, a discussion about a project we've done. I'm not going to talk about it yet. We'll get to it later. And I asked him how much we had spent. He told me, I asked him how many jobs. He said, around 100. And in my mind, I did the math and it was, it was kind of a big number. And I said, and I, I literally didn't know. I was just so ignorant. I said, so Kevin, is that like, is that good? You know, like is that, is that, is that good? And he's like, yeah, it's not that good. You know, I wasn't here when we did it. It, it happened in, you know, just before he got here. And he said, but you got to remember that you don't just get the job. You get the job and some percentage of, of, of the worker has a spouse. And some percentage of those people buy cars and some percentage of those people buy houses and some of the percentage of those people have kids that do things and. So he's telling me, he's basically talking about the economic impact of a job. And I said, well, wait a minute, Kevin. I said, how, and we're talking about a specific project. How many of those jobs, the people moved here? Like they didn't live here. And he said, I, I don't know. And he said, we don't, we don't keep up with that. And I said, well, because if that entity hired 100 people, but 85 of them just came from another job across town, we didn't get all those other things that we talk about with economic impact. We already had the wife, we already had the kids, we already had the car, we already had the house. And he, it, it got squishy and he, because talking about economic impact is just a super wobbly business. Like I'm, I haven't been involved in things that, that use them. And so that, and I didn't press him, but that's been on my mind about like, when we talk about jobs, like Amarillo thinks, and I think maybe you guys think that we, we got, we got, we got 5,000 jobs in the last, you know, five years. Well, we, we, we contracted for potentially 5,000. They may or may not happen and whatever do happen will take time, will take whatever time. But listen, when Buc-E's comes to town, 400 people did move to Amarillo to take a job there. They took a bunch of people from Greg Mitchell at Toot and Totem and all kinds of other people. Now that's fine. I'm not saying that's bad, but I think it's an honest question to ask, what is a job? Doug Nelson really, really helped me with this in the last two weeks. And Doug said, I, 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 in my mind, had decided what I kind of thought the number. I thought the number was maybe 10%. People move here. Now that doesn't mean there's no value in doing the deal. I'm not suggesting we only do any deals that people move here. But if we're going to measure how we're going to do, like how we're really doing and really what economic impact we're having, we got to have an honest talk about, is that, is that really a job? If I just go steal an employee from Cole because, because the ADC will give me 10,000 dollars for that guy over five years, I haven't created any job. I probably gave him a raise and then Cole had to go steal him from Tom. So that guy might've got a little bit of a raise. That's maybe even all okay and good, but, but it's not, it's not a job. Doug suggested he thinks the number is probably 25%. And so giving Doug that point, 25%, there's a problem with this spreadsheet. It's not a, it's not showing right, but, but the, the, the number of jobs realized over these last 15 years would be 375. And the price we paid for those jobs with our 290 million would be 775,000 dollars a job. Now, that's not the final answer. Okay, that's not the, that didn't mean the EDC isn't doing good. That doesn't mean we shouldn't have done any, doesn't mean anyone, any, anyone did anything wrong. But, but I would say to the community and I would say to the council, if we're going to take a serious look at the EDC, like we have to ask these questions so that we can see like how, like how are we doing? And how could we do better? And for, for, for going forward in the discussion, I'm going to go backwards and get rid of those things and we're just going to, you're going to use 1,500? But, um, but I can tell you that I started this project with a, a very high regard for the EDC. I had people that, you know, some people who don't like me, some people who do like me. I've had people who like me, call me and say, Alex, EDC is amazing. Like, don't mess this up. Kevin Carter is amazing. Like, don't mess this up. I said, don't worry, I, I know it's amazing. I'm sure it's going to be fine. And, um, but I, I've just taken a serious like look at it and we don't have all these jobs.
So before you move into the growth component, um, I want to make sure two things. One, we have these printed so to the media and then our citizens. I see people are trying to take photos and, um, want to make sure we're giving you accurate information. So for whatever reason, the 375 didn't print up there on, on this projection. City secretary can get these to you. And then let me go back and just say, um, you got 85 million dollars in the bank, right? So if, if we said we've spent 290, that would be different than saying we've taken in the 290. So, so one thing I'd like to point out, just for argument's sake, immediately what I would do is I'd subtract the 85 off the 290 and, and I'd come up with around 136,000 per job instead of 193. But even if you then go to what are actual jobs, what are created? You're now going back to just giving the, the, the latitude of 1,500 jobs. And let's just say that all 1,500 are where we're working from. So there's, there's multiple ways to look at this and, and you could pick it apart. I think what we're trying to do is give a good average for an ROI on what we're realizing here. And so whether you take the 85 out and say, well, you didn't spend 290, you only spent 220 or 205, is actually what that is. But then, um, with the job retention versus growth aspect, as we move into the next one, I'd just like to encourage the, the public, that's not the point, I think, is, is, you know, how bad we could make or how good we could make something look. The point is, is that Mr. Fairley is trying to show you an actual reporting on what is your return on investment for the monies that you've entrusted with this, uh, industry.
Yeah, Cole makes a good point. You could, you could, there's several ways you could kinda skin the cat. And you could say, let's, let's take the 85 million off of the 290. Some people could say, well, we can't take the 85 off the 290, we owe 140, you know? But those are, those are a little bit too. So I honestly could make that argument, but, but if you do that, then no, listen, the 12.5, looking for an ROI, like we're dramatically, dramatically, you know, beyond it. So, so basically where, to follow my, my just thinking process was I, I can just tell you, I'm super surprised at 1,500. Like personally, I'm, I'm, I would never have guessed that. Like I was very surprised. Like I personally, I just was struggling with it. I was like, okay, what am I missing? I go back to Kevin, I say, Kevin, is this, is this spread, is this fair? Is it a good look? I've had the added benefit of after Kevin left, I took the spreadsheet to Doug. I said, hey Doug, we were working on this, did you know about it? No about it, hadn't seen it. I said, would you look at it? Is this, is this, you know, I'd be happy to share this spreadsheet. It's certainly not in presentation form, but it's just the facts. You know, the ADC helped me put it together or they really put it together for me. And, um, so then where my mind goes is, okay, like 1,500 jobs. Let's say it's 2,000, like whatever. Like how are we doing? Like maybe 1,500 is good. Like I, you know, my, I'm having to reset everything I'm thinking. Of course, I started out thinking 5,000 in five years. It's maybe gonna be 10 or it's gonna be more than five. And now in my mind, I'm down to 1,500 over 15 years. And honestly, I'm starting to try to justify like, okay, surely this is, I just can, this is probably good somehow. We're looking for a way to be. So here's what I did. I went back and I started looking at, I asked, I think Kevin helped me with this. Like, how many jobs do we have total? Like how many people work here? And so I did some quick views and I looked at our population over those 15 years. Our population has grown from 191 to 203, 12,000 people, 6% growth. Our jobs in those 15 years, from 2010 to 14, have gone from 15.3 to, excuse me, have gone from 12.122.3 to 1, it's grown 15,000. We have twice the job growth as we have population growth. That's not really out of, job growth follows population growth, but it, many cities have more jobs than, than population. There's an explanation for it, but this is all fine and healthy. It's, it's good. But here's what struck me when I got these numbers. I said, in 15 years, we've, we've created 15,000 jobs in Amarillo. And the ADC has produced 10% of those. And being honest, walking into this process, I thought the ADC is driving the growth in Amarillo. In one of the board meetings, somebody, in my first board meeting, someone said, you have to understand, like we're growing because of the work the ADC is doing. And I don't, I think they were being completely honest. I think they totally believe that. And certainly, 1,500 jobs, we'll take them. Like I don't wanna discount 1,500 jobs, we'll take them. I'm not, I'm not sure I'd pay 290 for them, but we'll take them. But Amarillo has grown 13,500 jobs, like other jobs, like how? And, and this is to me, very, very important. And you'll see it inform some of my conclusions as we get here. Let me tell you, because we work hard and we are industrious and we are innovative and we're, we live in a capitalistic world that produces jobs. And the reality is, is the job drivers in our marketplace is us. Now, we should wanna add to it all day long, but the ADC isn't deciding our success. And I'm gonna tell you, I walked in this project assuming that it had. Now, that doesn't mean we should throw it away. I'm not going there today, in case anyone's wondering, or that we should stop it. But when you see yourself in that place, you operate totally different. Your plans become completely different. Because the reality is, good old, hardworking Amarillo people, people who started a laundromat or mow grass or build businesses or everything in between, we are the people that drive, that build jobs. And they didn't, they didn't come ask anybody for any money. They didn't get free things. They just were hardworking, panhandle, Texan people. And that is our biggest asset as an economy, in my opinion. And the ADC has to go into a mode of thinking about how they support it, how they support that. That's a different ADC, in my opinion, going forward. Now, I wanna talk about some deal highlights. Let me pause. Any questions about that?
Questions, Council, so far? Now, continue, sir.
No questions. I took the opportunity to just throw a couple of deals on the board. And this, I could, I've had so many to draw from. In fact, I didn't know about, the reason I went back 15 years, because the data before 15 years was less clear, way harder to find, so I would just pick 15 years. Plenty, plenty of big sample size of our, it's half of our life in the ADC. And these all come from these 15 years. There's some other things on here that, like the Bell deal isn't on here. The Bell deal is, is gonna be the best deal we ever did. I don't know, the Amazon deal is stupid, good deal. But the Bell deal was good. We've given Bell, in general speaking, we've given Bell $100 million over all these years. I can't remember when that deal was done. I think 1980, that's a long time ago. And 90, I can't remember, it's, it's old. And Bell produces $100 million in payroll a year. That's a, that's a really good, they're, like even if you don't swoosh up the economic impacts, a lot of economic impact and it's been a long time. It also has brought our community a ton of credibility and momentum and pride. Like, like we feel like we put those V22s in the air. There's a lot of value in, in those things beyond. So there's a lot of things we could talk about, but I put Amazon first. We did the Amazon deal in 2020, I don't know, two or three. We gave them $2.5 million, they've hired 900 people. That's 2,700, again, not the only way to measure how an ADC is working, but the clearest, straightforward agreed way, 2,700, unbelievable, good deal. Unbelievable, good deal. Very solid partner, they ought to be there for a long time, they're low maintenance. The nuance about the Amazon deal, speaking with my ADC hat on, is that we didn't do the deal. And that's why I didn't put it in the numbers on that previous slide. Amazon has their own team that is scouring the country for, for places to come and set up. And they found Amarillo, they contacted an Amarillo landowner, they engaged in a negotiation with that landowner, buy land and made a deal. And, and then we came and gave them $2.5 million. The words used by an ADC person to me was, that thing just fell in our lap. Now, that's fine, we'll take it. In fact, it's fair, every day we'll take it. It is 900 jobs. I don't know how many are real new jobs, but it's 900 jobs. I guarantee Amazon had to take good care of them. They probably had to pay them more than they were making before. They make good benefits, they're gonna be there, all kinds of good things about Amazon being here. Another person in my discussion said, you know, one of the best deals we ever did was Texas Tech Health Sciences Center, but we only gave them $6 million. And I said, how many, how many jobs? I don't know, let me go check, come back. 66 jobs, $6 million, $90,000 a job. Value, there's value there. Not suggesting, I'm not suggesting there's not. But in terms of measuring what we get for what we pay, $90,000 a job. Texas Tech School of Veterinary Medicine. Texas, we take, we, we will pay, if we live out the contract, we will pay $50 million for 120 jobs. It's $415,000, by any measure, by any measure. It will be, in terms of jobs and what we pay for it, it will be the worst deal that, that we ever did at the ADC. Now, I'm not saying there's no value, I wanna be so, so, so clear about this. The Texas Tech Vet School should be here. They are very valuable. Dr. Landergin is doing incredible job at, at that vet school. They just graduate, their first class will graduate in May. 87% of their kids passed their boards, it's 10% higher than the national average. 97% of those kids are gonna go work in rural cities, towns. That's all what they said they would do. They promised that they would give us 60, excuse me, 50, I think, million dollars in payroll over the six year, the first six years of their term. In 2024, they produced, that's about $8 million in payroll a year. In 2024, they have about $12 million in payroll. Texas Tech is utterly performing and they're incredible and they're very valuable to our community. But we did a bad deal. I applaud Tech for how they did the deal and how smart they were. But when we're spending the community's money, we have to think every bit of the way, we have to think about how we're doing the deals. And it, when you look at this board, if you call the Health Science Service, the Health Sciences Center an okay deal, the vet deal just sticks out. And, um, it was the, it was the discussion Kevin and I had in the very first one. I just knew about it. Everyone knows about the Texas Tech Vet School deal. And so, let me pause there. I have one more thing I wanna make a point about though. Any questions at all about, about this slide? The details about the Tech Vet School deal are, are important. Like I don't wanna be really so critical without providing some details, but, and, and this has been brought to light in our community in the last couple of weeks because, you know, one of the people running for mayor held his announcement at the Tech, at the Tech building and, and spent most of his time explaining his qualifications by talking about the deal. We made a lot of investment in that deal happening and the bottom line is they needed $90 million. The ADC first came in with around 20. The private money wasn't coming in. I think they raised about total $20 million. And, and the bottom line is Tech was, Tech was short $50 million. And, and even though we had made a big commitment at the DC, and I was aware of this at the time because they were engaging me because they were asking me to give money. So I was aware of the details. And, and Tech came in to us, late in the process and said, look, we're out of time. We don't have enough money. We need you to give us the rest of the money. And we raised our offer from, from, it may have gone already above 20. At one point, it was 20, may have gone up there, but we took it up to $69 million. And the reason I remember, I vividly remember because I was being asked to give a bunch of money to the, to the vet school. And I was, I was very interested in giving money. But I was, I was very cautious about it. I said, wait, wait, wait a minute. We, we can't give these people $70 million. I don't care what, how good it's gonna be, we can't give them $70 million. And the deal was that Tech would go after the deal was done and they would raise a bunch of money and they'd give, they'd forgive the money and go back. But if we just would make the commitment, they would go get what they needed done around the state, appropriations at the state level, appropriation in the educational world. And then, once the deal was done and it was finalized, the floodgates would open and their big donors would come in and they'd give money back. And, and, and they'd reduce our $69 million commitment down. And if I could just say this gently but firmly, it was this whole thing rests on you guys giving us $50 million more dollars. And, and you guys, we just blinked. And we blinked with our neighbor's money. So four years goes by, four year look back. And that's when we're gonna look and see if, if, how much money Tech could raise. We have a, we have a contract and in the contract, it says that we're gonna go raise money. There's specific language, I won't quote it for you, but I could, I haven't memorized, what they'll do. And there's even two places where there's a sample about how much money that might be. And that number in there is $25 million, the same number that I was told as a potential donor that they would raise at least. So it would take our 70. The 70 number really was 60 because Jerry Hodge was gonna give 10, incredibly generous gift that he gave on behalf of he and Margaret. So it was really 60. And, um, after four years, so the 60 would have taken us down to 35 if they raised 25. After four years, we went back to Tech, it happened in 2024, and they had raised $5 million. It was so kinda challenging to swallow that they forgave another five. And we signed a new amendment in, in 2024 and we brought the, we brought the deal down, the five they had raised and they forgave five. That's what got us to 50. That's why we're gonna pay 50. And I'm just gonna say, as the chairman now, this isn't, this doesn't feel good to me. This morning, I had a conversation with Ted Mitchell, who's the chancellor of Texas Tech. And I called him and, and I, I had this conversation with him. And I asked him to engage in a new discussion with us about reducing that number further. And he was incredible. And he said, I understand absolutely. He's off having a grandbaby. So when I get back, we'll sit down and we'll have this conversation. I believe we'll reduce that number. And I think we have to think about doing business like this going forward. I think we have to be willing to, to make a little bit tougher deal. Here's what I got told five years ago. If we don't do this deal overnight and give them the 70, this thing may not happen or we may have to wait two years for the next appropriations. And I'm gonna tell you what I would say as the chairman. I would say, fine, we'll wait. Because $70 million, it's, this morning, someone came to our meeting and said to the ADC, you're playing with house money. We're not playing with house money. We're playing with our neighbor's money. And I think we have to take a different approach. There's a lack of willingness to negotiate hard in the ADC world. It's not just in Amarillo ADC, it's in the ADC world. And we have to change the way that we think about those things. And I'll come back and talk about that later. I wanna, I wanna thank Dr. Mitchell. He was, he didn't do the deal. He wasn't in the role that he's in. And he was so gracious. Tech has been nothing but an incredible partner to us. How they're performing is everything they ever said, but we need to go work on this deal. I feel confident that we'll get to a better place with these guys. They're great partners. Okay, any questions before I go on? Okay. Besides my conversation with Kevin, and I, I just about wore Kevin out, bless his heart. I say that, I say that very graciously because I, he said to me several times, I know board, no board members altogether in all my time have ever asked me as many questions together as you. And I, he wasn't joking. And I got input from the data. And I got input from more, I'm just gonna say, more than a half a dozen other ADC directors around the country. Four in Texas, five outside of Texas. I just needed input. Like I needed to figure out like how this works, how, when I, when I realized that there's all these nuances to the ecosystem, the ADC, it's so odd and different. Not wrong, just not my world. I just needed to hear from as many people as I could. I talked to some of our, our customers, people we did a deal with. The CVMR deal fell through in my first month. And I, I talked to the CVMR people a few times. And in all of that, to me, there are six general conclusions that I've come to in this process. You basically start in, in doing things like this, which we do for our clients, you start with a tabletop. Think, just think of a tabletop, it's just empty. There's not a single piece of paper on it. There's not a, there's not a watermark, there's not a cup of coffee, it's empty. And when you start to try to figure out what, what for us, what those clients' issues are that they've asked you to come and look at, you just start, you just, you just start listening. My first two hours with Kevin, I just listened. Two hours, he talked an hour 55 minutes. Just listening. Most of my conversations with Kevin, he, he really did most of the talking, which is how I wanted it. And you just gather, and as you get pieces of information, you just, you just set it on the table and slowly things start to stack up. And you can't predict these conclusions. You can't have any preset conclusions. The only presetness that I have is I had a great opinion about the ADC in general and had a very positive opinion about Kevin Carter. I didn't know him very well, we shaken hands several times, had some nice words. He's very gracious to Caroline, very supportive Caroline, but everything was positive. So that was a little input that I had already that was just generally positive, but, and you can't rush the conclusions. You can't like try to hurry and get there. They only come when they come. And when they come, they're just obvious. And you don't, I don't, I don't have to prepare for this. You, you, it's just all in there. And so I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna give you some details about each of them. I could talk about each of these six conclusions. I could talk about them, every one of them, I could defend them for an hour with, with examples. The first conclusion is just that the ADC's performance, in my opinion, it isn't good enough. Now, listen, I rewrote that sentence 50 times because I wanna deliver it graciously. I don't want to indict anybody. I don't want to point fingers at anybody, but we got to do better than this for our community. We just have to do better than this for our community. And I'll pause here and say that, you're going to hear me say that I don't think this thing has been well-attended. And I, for one, this is my taxpayer hat, not my EDC board chair hat, I'm thankful that you guys didn't give up. When you saw something that didn't look quite right and you frankly didn't have a lot of options on what you could do, like, there's just so much you could do. And it didn't go well and you got a lot of heat, and I'm just thankful that you stayed in there. And now, you've been accused of running the old board off. I don't think you ran the old board off. I think they ran off. And it turned out to be just open door that we got to walk into and got the information unfettered. But the bottom line, you guys, we can't, I'll say this. I was in Amarillo, I was around thirty when we voted in the EDC. Wasn't that involved in civic things, but I remembered. I was a young professional and I remember the EDC thing. And I don't remember tons about it, but I remember the kind of the push was, "We got to do this to stay competitive in Texas." Like, other cities are doing it and this half-cent sales tax, you'll never notice it. And in those days, we probably only raised, I don't know, eight million dollars a year, who knows what it was. And the community voted for it. But the vote was on, it was betting on the come. Like, we didn't really know what would happen. I would say this, if we had to vote today for the EDC and we could say, "Here's how it's going to work for the next fifteen years," because we now have fifteen years. It's not going to be two hundred and ninety, it's probably going to be, it's probably going to be closer to four hundred million in the next fifteen years. And we said, "We're going to produce fifteen hundred jobs," I would not vote for it. I don't think, I don't think many people in Amarillo would vote for it. We have to do better. I'm not suggesting we stop it, but we have to do better. And I would just say, please don't anyone be offended by that. Don't be offended, don't be personally offended. I'm not taking shots at any people on that board. I'm not taking a shot, I'm not even taking a shot at Kevin. I'm going to be honest, you guys are going to hear me say it in a minute. We did Kevin a disservice. Kevin could have succeeded better had we led him better. But we have to do better going forward, in my opinion. This is a very interesting point. It's not good or bad, it's just a fact, but it informs how we think about doing business going forward. Many of our big successes come to us. I wish I could show everybody my spreadsheet. And when you go down it and you look at the deals, there's all kinds of interesting things, fascinating things in that data. But many of our deals, they come to us, and I'm talking about as the EDC. We do a lot of running around chasing deals, a lot of running around chasing deals at the EDC. Mostly, it's Kevin's job. That's mostly our leader's job, our past leader's jobs. But our best deals come to us, they come to us. P O B, producer own beef, it came to us. Those guys were building that thing in Amarillo, they were never going anywhere else. And they didn't do the deal because of us. And we're only paying them five thousand, we're giving them a thousand. They're not hiring any new people because of what we did. We, I don't know if we sold them or leased, I think we're leasing them some land to put their drainage in, forgive my, you know, layman version of that. We had no impact on that deal. It was just people being, you know, building things and inventing things and being innovative and being forward-thinking. And it's a great deal and we should talk about it and it's fantastic, but it came to us. Amazon came to us. Maxor came to us. I could go down the list, I have a list, I'm not looking at my notes, but I have a list, and that's all good, but it's very important, I'll come back to it later. I'm not saying that's bad. And we go chase some deals down where we find them from somebody else. It's not, none of them come, but many of them come to us. And you'll see where I go with this in just a minute. Number three, we lack a clear vision. Mostly, vision. And as a result of that, we lack direction. We virtually have no goals and we have no strategy. The first time I talked to Kevin, Kevin's a salesman, he's our salesman. I mean, I'd say that in the most generous way. I was a salesman. Some people would say, "You referring to yourself as the same as Kevin is not that generous." I don't know, but let me tell you what salesmen want. Salesmen need to know what they have to sell and they need to know that it's good. If you're a salesman looking for a sales job, you don't want to sell the junkiest cars. You want to sell the best cars. If you're selling vacuum cleaners, you want to sell the best, you need something to say, "Hey, my vacuum cleaner's better than that vacuum cleaner, that's why you should pay for it." Very, very basic thing a salesman wants. I said, "Kevin, when you're out selling, what do you tell people we are? Like, what do we have to sell?" And I'm not going to tell you what Kevin said to me, but what he said to me is what we don't have. And in that first two hours, he said that phrase to me five times. And again, I'm just, I never told him that I noticed it. I'm just taking input. And what I'm thinking is, my sales guy in Amarillo, I don't know if he knows what we have to sell. And I'm going to tell you, the last conversation I had with Kevin was the Monday before the Friday that we parted ways and asked Kevin the question again. And he doesn't know what we have to sell. Now, when I talk about it, he's, yeah, yeah, he's going to say, "I know." I'm not going to tell anyone about that, anything you don't already know today. But, you guys, we have, we don't know who we are. Like, we're selling ourselves to the world and it's a competitive dog-eat-dog world. Like, it's a fight. And we better have a clear vision about who we are. And I'm just telling you, we don't have one. And because we don't have a vision, and I don't mean a vision, I'm not talking about, the vision doesn't say, "We just hope we grow more jobs." That's not vision, that's a dream. A vision has a lot more specificity to it. And it's something, it should be aspirational, but we should think we can get there. And until you have that and it's clear, then you can set direction. Like, if there's no vision, it's just like, "Oh, we're just trying to get jobs." Then you know what you do with that vision? You just look all over across the landscape and just see anywhere we could find a job. It's a shotgun approach. And we don't have goals. We had discussions about Kevin's last bonus and we had to look into his goal, we had to look, we looked how things went in twenty-four. And Kevin told me, "I met all my goals. I get my bonus every year." I said, "Could you send me? I got the goals." I printed out, I got them here. They're not goals, I'm just telling you, they're not goals. I don't know who proved them, I don't know who said they were good, they're not goals. The main work product of Kevin's goals, this is not Kevin's fault, by the way, are all the trips that he was going to do in twenty twenty-four to go see people. That is not a goal. That's getting close to tactics, close, not even tactics, but it's not a goal. And then, the last thing you do, once you know the goal, the goal would be, in the next five years, we want to realize six thousand jobs. And you would have to know what you defined as a job. Then the last thing you do is you make a strategy. You got to figure like, where am I finding those six thousand jobs or whatever the number is? We don't have any of these things. And that's why we're not doing that amazing. We didn't have it before Kevin got here. I'm not just tagging this on the last five years. We've, I can't see no signs that we ever had this very well. This is a very interesting point to me, too. This is true of the EDC ecosystem, but it's also true of us. There exists a pervasive, and by pervasive, I don't mean negative. I don't mean bad, I don't mean anyone's doing anything wrong. I mean, it's across the board, it's everywhere. Motivation to create a win tally. I noticed started, I didn't see this for, I didn't see it for maybe a month. I started seeing it, but I couldn't put my hands on it. It was just, again, it was just pieces of paper on the desk. And they weren't in the right order in my mind, like, it just takes time. But it showed itself in the first fifteen minutes of my conversation with Kevin. Now, think about Kevin where he was. He was under a lot of heat from you guys. The media was quizzing him every day, people were attacking his wife. He was in a bad place. First thing I said, "How you doing?" He said, "I'm not doing too good." And I felt for him, my heart went out to him. But, and so he was probably thinking, wondering, "Okay, like, is this the mercenary they sent?" Like, he may have been thinking that. Like, in our world of culture, in our businesses, we spend our life thinking about what the other people are doing and where they're thinking and how it looks to them. And I went into that conversation, Kevin's probably thinking, "This dude is the guy coming with the gun in his hand, he's just going to shoot me in the head," because probably they told him to. I mean, you guys got to admit, some people thought that. And so he pretty quickly went into defending himself without me asking him. I didn't say, in fact, I told him, I said, "I want you to know, I have only positive thoughts. We're going to figure this out." Like, I tried to put him at ease. And he began to tell me, and you know how he told me how he did? He told me how many jobs he produced. And it was the very first sign, I didn't recognize, it was the very first sign of this need to create a win tally. And it showed up a thousand places along the way, everywhere. It showed up in, it showed up in, forgive me, I'm finding my place here in my notes. It showed up in the CVMR discussion. CVMR comes, they ask for an extension, the mayor asks for a meeting to say, "Could we hear what's going on before we give them their extension?" Kevin wanted to give them the extension. It became, you know, really obvious in a conversation that I had with CVMR CFO that there was no deal. There was never a deal. They were never going to come build that plant here. And Kevin wanted an extension. And he wasn't being bad, he wasn't being evil, like, it wasn't, but he wanted the extension because that was a thousand jobs. At the end of that discussion, I said, "Kevin, why are you pushing for this extension? Like, this thing is dead on arrival? Like, if we kick it down the road six miles, it's still dead on arrival." And he struggled and kind of struggled. The answer was, "It's a thousand jobs. And maybe if there's a one percent chance of hanging on to it," because you know why? That's how we measure. That's how we measure these guys. We have a hard time negotiating in the EDC and in the AEDC. We talked about a deal once, we're talking to somebody, they're already here, a partner, they want to expand some more, we're getting just a brief update on the deal, we talk about it and we talk about, "We're going to help them build something, we're going to give them tax abatements." And I'd say, "Do we have to give them as much tax abatements?" And of course, I'm the ignorant guy in the room. And I'm sure the team has many times looked at me and thought, "You just don't know what you're doing yet. You'll eventually understand like how this works." And we talked about how much it was and I said, "Okay." So I was trying to get my hands around like the negotiation, like, how do they go? What happens? How tough are they? Where do we start? Where do they start? Do they come in with the man? I'm just trying to understand it because I just, all I know is, I want to give less tax abatements away than more. Like, I would like it to be zero. There's laws about how far we can go, ten by ten's the most we can go. We gave these people, we gave these people eight by eight, so eighty percent the first year, seventy, sixty, fifty, forty. And so I asked, like, I said, "What did they ask for?" And people were looking at me, like, and the answer was, "They didn't ask for anything. We gave them, this is what offer we made." They didn't counter the offer. You know why? Because it's a very good offer. When you make somebody an offer and they don't counter, you offered them too much. My question, though, was, "Could we just start out with forty, maybe, instead of eighty or twenty and make them ask for twenty percent more?" This is true of the EDC culture. They're in a competition for deals. And to balance this conversation, there is times we have to compete for these jobs. And I'll get, it's very important, I'll get to in a moment about, it informs what I think we have to do differently going forward. But we're in, those people, someone said, "They could go build this in Kentucky." And so maybe Kentucky gave them something and we got, that totally exists, so it's just not like everyone's an idiot for giving away tax. But I want to negotiate because, you know what? Tax abatements, they are the oil in our engine of our city. They are our lifeblood. Like, the engine doesn't run without that oil in it. And you got to keep pouring more and more oil in it, just like you have to in any other engine. And I would like not to give away tax, you know why? Because I pay my taxes and you pay your taxes and everyone's here to pay their taxes. And the people coming to town who don't have to pay taxes, they're still going to call the police and they're still going to call the fire engines out when the building's burning down. And they're still going to expect the roads and the sewage and electricity and all that stuff to work. And I want them to pay their taxes. That's my taxpayer hat, that's not my EDC hat. But we have created an environment where our guys need, they need wins, they need wins. Because, and you know why? Because we don't have a clear vision and direction and goals. And so it's a self-preservation technique psychologically. We need to say, "The first fifteen minutes, kind of look, Alex, five thousand jobs." And all the deals were, I'm looking at deals and I go, "Why did we do that deal?" And I got people now, after the fact, Kevin's gone, saying, "I don't know why we did that deal. That wasn't a very good deal." And there's this, it's in the culture of EDCs to create wins. And it makes us do deals that aren't as good and it makes us do deals, we just should never do them. We should never, because we have a full-time person, he's very talented, I only have the highest regard. His job is to call on Amarillo companies who are doing well and growing and ask them if they want to do an EDC deal. First one I heard of, first board meeting. Boop, it's a company, I know the people, they live on my street, amazing people, amazing Amarillo story, amazing company. And they're growing anyway, and I didn't know about this job. And I said, "Did we, they were going to produce," I'm not going to say the number because I don't want people to know who they are, it's not their fault. "Did we ask them how many jobs they were growing anyway?" And Kevin said, "No, like, we don't, we don't ask people." Like, it's kind of like not, we're not supposed to ask them that. And I said, "Well, why can't we ask them?" Like, because I'd rather give the money to less so he grows because he couldn't grow another way. That's who I'd rather give the money to. But we were, and that worked. And this person is very good, they're doing exactly what we asked them to do. They're very, very good at it. I have nothing but compliments for them. But we're building wins. And there's not enough regard to whether we ought to be doing those deals or not or if those people were going to grow anyway. One of those deals happened to me eight, nine years ago. I had some partners in a company that started having a discussion with the EDC, I was vaguely aware of it, wasn't involved. Come to me and say, "Hey, good news, we got the EDC deal done, we're about to sign it." And I said, "Okay, explain it to me." "Well, we're going to grow, they're going to give us," I can't remember, ten thousand a job, whatever, I didn't know the number. I said, "Wait a minute, like, we're growing anyway. Like, it doesn't matter if they give us this money. Like, in fact, we're growing faster than they think we're going to grow. I can't take the money." And they quickly said, "Ah, we didn't think about that like that way." I said, "Go tell them we can't do the deal." Two days later, I got a call from the mayor-elect, said, "Alex, what do you mean, you're not doing the deal?" I said, "I'm not doing the deal. I don't, I don't need to do the deal, I'm growing anyway. I can't take the money when I would do the deal, when I would grow people anyway. Give it to people who need it." And I got told, "You can't, you can't back out of this deal. The AEDC needs a win." That was the quote. "The AEDC needs a win. You can't do this to us right now." And then we entered into a little bit of a negotiation about how we could do it some other way. And here's where we settled. We settled that, because they didn't owe any money yet, like, I had to produce the jobs, like, it was going to be like eighteen months before I got any money. And then, I wasn't going to get all the money for like ten years. And so there was nothing to give back. And so we agreed that I would wait until it was time that we got the money and then I would get out of the deal. And that would be like eighteen months away and it wouldn't be that big a deal then. So we did that, we pushed it off. Eighteen months comes by, my CFO comes to my office and says, "Alex, we got some thousands of dollars." And I said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, hang on, don't, like, don't set that aside." We're like, "We're giving it back." I forgot. So we go back, say, "Okay, it's time to give the money back." Then I got a call from an existing board member of the ADC that said, "Alex, wait a minute, what are you doing? Like, you can't do that, you can't give this money back." Now it's money, we had the money. It, it was, it was totally gonna be $8 million, 1.8 million dollars. And this person on the A D C board literally just pressed me, "You cannot give this money back. It's gonna make us look bad." I said, "This is a moral question for me. There's no negotiation, I'm giving the money back." Went, we had a board meeting, it was fine. It was no big deal. It was no problem. And I thought back to that conversation in the last three months, when I started noticing these, the E D C culture, they need wins. And we have to change the way that we look at this if we're gonna do better business going forward. There's a lack of board oversight and loose operational practices in place at the A E D C. Kevin said to me, listen, I could talk about this for an hour. I assumed this not to be true. But, one of the, I, I'm trying to think about where I start. But Kevin said to me, several times we had this conversation, Kevin said to me, "Alex, I've never had a board member this involved." And at one point, he said, "You understand things about the A D C that no board member that I've ever had understands." And, and, that shouldn't be possible in 90 days. I'm not really that smart. Like, I say that with total genuineness. I'm just average smart. Like, and my, my point is, anyone can figure this out. This is not rocket science. He told me, "You've asked more questions than any board member I've ever had. The budget, the budget, I'm just gonna tell you, the, the A D C board, I don't think they could understand the budget. It's not a budget. Like, it's just not a budget. And, and no one who's ever had a budget would call it a budget. And I don't know why no one ever said, "Eh, this feels like, eh, is this a budget?" Like, you, when you look at a budget, you think you know what's gonna happen, and you think it's gonna be accurate. But our budget, it's not, it isn't accurate. We know it isn't accurate. I don't know why anyone, like, like, and, and to understand it, because of the vagueness of it, you gotta understand the nuances of the deals. You gotta understand the nuances of what we committed to Albert's. We've made a deal with Albert's that I have a lot of questions about now. We gave, we gave essentially a startup operation $8 million in cash. And then we committed to build him a $50 million hangar, and told him they're not gonna have to pay taxes on it. And I'm getting familiar with them, I'm in contact with them. I have hope that that, that they're gonna be fine. I think they have great intentions, they have done a lot of other good things, they are no C V M R. But, I'm gonna tell you, people don't understand that deal. Our board didn't understand that deal, you don't understand that deal, most people don't understand that deal. And so, the other thing Kevin said to me in my second conversation, second conversation, he's telling me all these places he got, all this work he does, all these people he goes and sees, all these site selectors, all these conventions that he go to. The guy, the guy worked very hard. Flew all over the country, flew all over the world to see people, meet with people, go to things. And at one point, I start thinking, "Okay, how, how, what do you need from your board?" Like, I'm feeling like, like, I need that offer to help him. And I said, "Kevin, what do you, what do you need from your board?" Like, what, like, the board left, they're gone. Like, and I'm kind of the only guy here. Like, what, what do you need from me? "So, I don't, I don't need anything from you, Alex." He said, "I don't need anything from my board." He said, "I got it." He said, "You're just volunteers." He was, he wasn't insulting me. He was letting me off. But it was a very gentle, a little very gentle brush back, like, "I got it. Just show up at the board meetings." Who goes over the board minutes, like, I mean, uh, the agenda, like, what do we, I, I assumed I was gonna have to plan that. "No, no, no, I got it. I'll show it to you before, just come, I'll tell you what to do." Gave us an update on C F, C V M R that it wasn't accurate. I think that would've, his expenses. First time I ever sat down with Kevin to talk about his expenses, he got a little short with me. I, I looked at one receipt, and I said, "What is this receipt?" And he got a little frustrated with me, directed me to another place. And I'm gonna tell you, I know you guys had a little spit-spad amongst yourself about Mr. Hyde's work on the expenses. Whatever you spent on it, I'm just glad you did it before you changed your rules, because that $18,000, I think it was, was immensely valuable to me. There are things in the expenses that shouldn't be on our expenses. If you're running a tight ship. There are many, many, many receipts for hundreds of dollars at a time, where there's no record of who was there. And there's no, like, in my company, where it's all my money, when I fill out an expense report for a dinner, I write who was at the dinner. Just, just, when I'm signing the check, I just say, "John, Jane, Tom, they were there." What company they were from. It's just a very normal way to keep expenses. We have all these, there's no rec, here's my point. Someone signs off on Kevin's expenses. And they could not have been paying good attention. And so, the first time I did, Kevin, he wasn't sure what to do with it. And listen, I don't think anyone did anything legal. It wasn't anything anyone would've gotten fired over. Nobody, I don't think anybody stole anything. I've been through, now with a fine-tooth comb. But expenses tell a story about the way a company runs. Every, we have a company, one company, who's travel and entertainment, T and E, it's over $3.5 million. I have never looked at an expense report in that company. I don't need to. My people, they, they operate with a, a tight ship. And, and there's a lot of things like that about, here's why I use the word loose, and I'll move on from here. One of our early conversations, we had a conversation about the range. I say, "Kevin," I waited till like the fifth meeting. I didn't wanna talk about the range. I didn't want this to be about the range. I said, "Kevin, talk about the range, tells me, tells me about the range." And it's painful. It's painful, full painful story. And, and it was a little bit, you know, the board, you know, the board, the guys on the board told, told me to give the money. So, it was a little bit of, look, I, I, I got told to do that. And I was pressing Kevin, because I, I wanted, I wanted to know, like, where he was on it. Like, I didn't care really whose fault it was. It was, it was, it was, it wasn't, it wasn't good, the story of the range. It's not, it isn't good. And, and we can brush it under the rug if we want, you know? We, we can do that if we want. But I'm talking to the guy who's the CEO of his organization, I'm the chairman of, and I, I need that guy to recognize when things aren't, aren't good, that, that, like, that you gotta own it, so that we know it's not gonna happen again. And I said, "Kevin, okay, but they told you to do it, but like, how did you feel?" And he said, "Well," he said, "Alex, it was, it was loose." And I said, "Kevin, is that how everything is at the A D C?" He said, "Yeah. Everything at the A D C is loose." It was an honest moment, I had a lot of honest moments with Kevin. And he said, "It was like this when I got here." So, I know Kevin doesn't really know how it was before he got here, but it's not like Kevin came in, and he was just like Mr. Loose. Like, he operated the way the E D C operates. And this has to change going forward if we're gonna run a, a tight ship at the E D C and get everything out of it. I could go on, I'm gonna quit. This is the last one of my conclusions. I am gonna talk about what we should do going forward. Um, I'm not just gonna, you know, this is like the tough part of the discussion. You guys, I, this morning, I woke up, I didn't sleep very good last night. I was listening to a podcast, wasn't about anything about this, but someone said something was very, is very apropos to today. He said, "You can't fix something if you can't say it." And this is the part of the, the presentation, of the discussion today, the conclusions. It's like the tough part. Like, it's the part where we just take a hard look at ourselves and say, "Ah, that's, like, we gotta, like, we gotta do that better." Really, what I would say in my world is, own your stuff. Like, own your problems. So, I have an employee that has a problem. I don't mind if they make a mistake, I just want them to own it. Because if they own it, they probably won't do it again. If they don't own it, 100% they're doing it again. This showed up, took me time, took me time. It's the most important of all the things in the presentation. It's the most, in my opinion. Like, you look at all kinds of stuff when you're doing evaluations like this, and most of them are symptoms. Some of the most egregious things, they're only symptoms. There's some deeper thing below. And in my opinion, this is the deepest thing at the bottom of the, "How, how could we do better?" Discussion, this is the deepest thing. And it, it, it comes out in a thousand different ways. And it's just simply an underappreciation that this is somebody's money. Like, I think it's an E D C probably kinda thing, but the money is just coming in. And it's coming in every year. And it's gonna probably, this year, for, for one year, like, it went down like some 1% this year. But in general, it's, it's growing, and it's rising, and it's coming. And we can't really even stop it, because if we all decided today, not that we get to decide this, we're stopping the E D C, we still gotta fund the thing for like 10 more years. If Amarillo said that stuff. Like, it's coming, it's going on, and it's going on and on. But in my conversations with Kevin about the range, and my conversations with other people about the range, and my conversations with Kevin about expenses, you can't describe our, our success in jobs that leave people misunderstanding what's going on. You can't, you can't do deals like C V M R. You can't do deals where we give away more than we should when you utterly appreciate that we are spending people's money. If we could get that, and listen, it's very natural. Here's what I said to Kevin one day. I said, "This is like the hip surgeon, okay? The surgeon who does hips, and he's done now 2,000." And it's just human nature, after a while, he doesn't notice how bad it hurts. He doesn't notice how hard it is. He doesn't think about the rehab as much. He doesn't think, but the first one, it was dramatic. But after you've just done 1,000, you know it's gonna be okay, and they're gonna get rehab, and they're gonna get better, and there's gonna be a little bit of range about when they get better compared to other people. But, it just becomes, and this is how we are with the fact that we are spending, we are spending everyone's, someone's, like, money. And I think it is rampant in, across the, the, I think it's just in the E D C world. Two days after you put me on this job, the head of the Texas E D C Association wrote a letter to the public and chastised all you guys, and said how great Kevin was, and how bad you were, and how mistreated. And, and, and ultimately, like, there's a whole story behind that that I'm not gonna share today, that's, you know, super painful, because that was orchestrated and choreographed by a group of people in, in our town. And, um, one thing that he said along the way was, as, what the critiques of Kevin were, "This is how everyone does it." That's a painful statement to me. I don't, I don't care how everyone does it. Like, we're talking about, we're talking about our neighbors' money. And I just think we, over time, I think we slowly lose. You can't look at the, you, you guys, this is, this is the CDC thing. Like, we're an E D C, we're taking money. We're a part of this estate association, we give them money. We're a part of like a Panhandle Association, we give them money. They give us, they give each other money. We're a part of some association that represents the traffic that goes from Del Rio to Canada. You know, we pay in money for that. We give the Amarillo Chamber of Commerce $80,000 a year. I gotta be honest with you, I don't, I'm not sure I know why we do that. But, we, we will spend this year over $300,000 in dues and subscriptions to other people like us. We go to conventions. I've had, I had three conversations with Kevin about things that he went to. Things that he goes to, where we're spending money. Every one of them ended with, my question, "So, what do we, like, get out of that, Kevin? Like, what, like, what, what do we get?" Like, okay, we're go, we get, in our companies, we could go to a convention every week of our life. The only people who make money at conventions are people who put on conventions. And so, we don't go to hardly any of them. And when we do do them, we do it like, we try to do it smarter than anybody else. We do, like, this is, this is what we do. This is how we chase things down. And the first one I asked, I said, "Kevin, how, how, like, so what did we get? What did we leave with? Like, do we, we leave with leads, do we?" He said, "No, no, we didn't get anything out of it." He said, "We're not going back to that one." But they've been like five times in a row. Like, people aren't thinking, "Listen, we're spending the community's money on expenses." Here's what I said, here's what I'd like you to think about when you turn in expense reports. I would like to think about what you would turn in if you had to put that thing on the web when you came home and show all of Amarillo what you did with every dollar. Not saying Kevin ever took anything, stole anything, it's just too loose. We're spending everyone else's, people, someone else's, everyone, our neighbors, 17-year-olds who go to Toot and Totem. You know, the people who, who can't afford to take their laundry like I can. The wealthy people, everybody, we all give this money. We owe our community a tight-run ship. And if we could wake up every day thinking about that, we would do business, you know, differently at the E D C. Sorry, I'm gonna hurry a little. What's next? Any questions? I'm gonna read this and then break it up. "We must, number one, we must create a directed vision that leverages Amarillo's competitive advantages, and then, build a strategy and tactics around that vision." Okay, so by vision, like, we have to have some specificity. It's not just that we would like to grow jobs. And it needs to be directed. And I'll, I'll explain more about this in a minute. But, we gotta vis, we gotta direct, we gotta create a vision that leverages what we have, that we're better at than anybody else. And people in the room, people listening, might say, "What, what, what is that?" I'm gonna talk about what it is in a minute. And then, when, when we identify that vision that leverages our competitive advantage, then we're gonna build a strategy around that vision. You know why? So, we can win. Like, we're in a competition, and we wanna win. And we need to come, when you don't have a vision that's directed around your, your competitive advantages, you know what you have to do to win? You have to give more away. You just have to give more abatements than Lubbock gave away. You know, you have to build more of their building than someone else would've built. Like, so, but, so, I'll go on to the next thing. "We must become focused around our competitive advantages and direct all of our resources toward leveraging those advantages." So, listen, we, we can't be all things to all people. As a business, if you wanna, if you could call the E D C that, we have some things to work with, and we have some resources, and we, we're just scattershotting our opportunities around it. We're just, we're just hoping we kill, you know? We feel a few rabbits in the bush, we kill a deer here and there. We, we kill a big animal occasionally, very, very occasionally. Some we think we killed, we didn't kill them, they never die. Some of them run away, even though we thought we had them. We're not focused. We don't have focus, we're just kind of everywhere. That goes back, though, honestly, to the, to a board. A board has to lead, our leader. A board has to, has to expect a vision and set it. The board has to, to, to make ourselves find these competitive advantages. When I asked Kevin what they were, in the last meeting I had for him, he said, told me two things. One, our workforce. Two, our conservative values. Neither of those are competitive advantages. Our workforce is not an advantage at all. It's a, it's a weakness, because we don't have any unemployment here. So, companies coming, their first challenge is, "I don't know if I can find 1,000 people." Amazon did by paying them more and giving them better benefits. But everybody can't do that. Our workforce is not an advantage. Our conservative, conservative values, they're not an advantage. No, no one's moving to Amarillo because we have conservative people here. It, it, it's very rarely gonna happen. I'm gonna give you two examples of what I think are competitive advantages. I don't think we have five. I don't think we have four, we might have three. I think we only have a couple. First one is, I think, logistics, distribution, and warehousing. Here's why. We live on a commercial Mississippi River called Interstate 40 and I-27. A, a close friend, I can't take credit, a close friend of mine said, "I-40 is our Mississippi River. It's even better, flows both ways." The Mississippi River, if you go and look on the Mississippi River, from all the way up there to where it starts, all the way to New Orleans, major cities were built on the river because of the commerce that the river brought. I-40 is a river. Now, that's not, none of you are saying, "Oh, my heavens, I'm so glad you figured this out. We never knew that." Like, everyone knew, but we don't leverage it. We are an incredible place for logistic, it's what Amazon did. That's why they came here. And I'll explain in a minute. By the way, that point is only growing. President Trump, right now, has special ops in Mexico chasing down the drug cartels. And he's gonna stop the flow of drugs up the main artery, which is I-35. When he does that, it's gonna push people over to I-27. And not only is that gonna bring traffic, some of it bad, some of it good, it's frankly in our future, it's gonna bring security. It's gonna bring federal and state security here. Like, that, when you look at a competitive advantage, something that you have, you wanna also know, is it going away or is it getting better? Like, if we're really good at something, but in 10 years it's gonna be gone, we wouldn't invest in that. That is a growing advantage that we have. It's only gonna get better and better. And we don't leverage it as much as we could. Defense, I think, should be our second competitive advantage. Here's what we have. Our location. Two things, we're in the dead middle of the country. It's very, very valuable. It's not valuable, it's very valuable to a lot of people. Number two, the rest of the country's major airports are crawling with illegal people and spies. When you wanna go do a deal at Meacham or Alliance in Fort Worth, you have to spend a fortune keeping the bad people out because they're all down there. You don't have to do that in Amarillo, Texas. Our location is very valuable. Our airport is very valuable. We can land in this airport any kind of aircraft on the planet 350 days a year. Our history with Bell. We have a rich history with an incredibly well-known, highly-respected company. We have momentum, we have a relationship with them. There's all kinds of things that we could leverage there. And even the airbase, the airbase is a huge advantage for us. I think Amarillo should become known as the place you come to do defense. It's already happened, it's not like a new idea, they didn't like dream this up. Like, we're doing this already. But in my opinion, these are two biggest competitive advantages. And I would sell out to these two things strategically. I would invest in these things and I would make strategies built around being able, for our next Kevin to be able to go and say, "If you come to Amarillo, here's all the stuff you get if you're in the defense business." Already, it's happening. This point I made about there's people out there doing deals and doing business outside the EDC. We have banks in town already doing deals with people. There's defense stuff coming. And, but, but this is just one of the good things and if it happens, it happens. Like, we should chase these two things down like there's nothing else to do. And I would limit chasing the deals that don't focus on these strengths. I literally would cut down things that don't focus on these strengths. I wouldn't call every business in town anymore and ask them if we can give them money. I would stop that. We can tell them we can give money, they can come if they want. If they come, we should talk to them. If we can help them, we should help them. The vetting process is already very good, it's very tight, it's very good. But we're spending, I would take the resources we spend on that and I would spend it on the other two up there. I mean, I'm talking about the person that we have. And I would become leaner and more focused and more support-centric. You see me going back to some of the conclusions. Look, folks, the EDC is not saving the world in Amarillo. I'm just gonna tell you, if we give somebody $10,000 a job, Don, you're a businessman, if I said, "Don, I'll give you $10,000 a new person. I'll give it to you over five years, so I'll give you $2,000 a year if you go hire a new person for 50 grand." Are you hiring a new person tomorrow? I don't think you are. Like, it doesn't ma, it, listen, we have this impression that the EDC is saving the world and the people are coming here because we give them $2,500 a year. I'm just telling you as a businessman, I'm not hiring people. $2,500 doesn't cover their health insurance for a quarter. And so, what I'm saying is, we have a place, it's a very important place, but we need to see where it is. And it's frankly supporting already the industry and the innovation and the entrepreneurialism that goes on because of the people that live here already. And when you think that way differently, then you approach everything that you do different. And I think it will be a better place. I think we can be leaner. I don't think we need to chase down every convention in the country where people, you know, show up. Listen, I'm just gonna tell you, I wouldn't go to a seminar and have a trade booth where I'm in the trade booth with Lubbock. Lubbock is my competitor. Lubbock wants the same things that I want. If a guy comes up to the trade show booth and says, "Hey, I might bring a company up in the Panhandle," I don't want Lubbock standing there. And we have these groups that we're in and we do these things together. And I'm not saying there can't be some good from it, but we aren't thinking like on the edge of like, "This is a competition. I'm trying to beat Lubbock. I'm gonna find a different way to get to that guy." I don't know that we should, we're gonna have to go to trade shows. We're gonna have to go to site selector shows. But we gotta change our mindset about the way we do things. We gotta focus on the things that are good, we gotta sell out to them, we gotta invest in them. And we gotta, we gotta, we gotta run our life and business like it's a fight and like we wanna win. We need a board that will engage, oversee, and lead. I said this already in my second conversation with Kevin. He said, "I don't really need that much help. You're a volunteer, my board is a volunteer." I don't wanna watch any, as a board chairman, I'm gonna sign off on the chairman's, on the president's expenses. I don't ever wanna look at another expense receipt ever in my life. I don't care. What I want is I want a leader that I don't have to. But if I have to, then I will. And the board's gotta come, kinda with that attitude. There's all kinds of things that Kevin did that he felt like he was doing his job and he was working very hard. Like, I would never have wanted Kevin, I spent his whole life on the road. And he was, and he was very active and he was very busy. And I don't, I don't think anyone knew really that much what's happening. And I don't think anything nefarious or bad was going on. And I know Kevin's first brush to me was, "Ah, I got it, I got it, Alex." But Kevin needed someone to lead him and I don't think he got that leadership very well. And when I started to provide it, it wasn't comfortable to him. He didn't like it, he wanted it to stop. And when Laura Street picked up the phone and called either Mr. Hall or Mr. Bentley, whichever one she called, and said, "We need $750,000 at the range," that board member should've said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, hold up, I gotta talk to my board." Out of respect for the board, out of respect for just what's above reproach and right, and frankly, out of respect for Kevin. And the fact that two, that a board member took that call, got with another board member, decided to do that, left the other, left the other board members out of the discussion, didn't have a meeting, having only asked for 100 grand and sent 750, with no commitment about what was gonna happen, not even a proposal, much less any list of deliverables. That board was not engaged enough. That board, like, we needed that person, I know who that person was. I talked to that person, they admitted that it was wrong. I asked them to go back and ask for the money back. They said, "I can't do that, I can't ask for the money back." We gotta have board people who will engage and be involved and take the time to figure it out and lead. And without that, you shouldn't expect the EDC to perform any better than it has the last 15 years. The last one is that we've gotta unleash. When I say unleash, I don't mean like unleash all of our missiles towards Russia. I mean unhook a dog from a post leash. We have to unleash the EDC from privileged access and the over-influence of a few. You guys, if you go back and look at the deals, there's a few group of people who have access to the EDC and they have more influence than they should have. It starts with who got put on the board. It's a small group of people in Amarillo who've decided who's on the EDC board for a lot of years. I have been in some of the conversations, I've heard them firsthand. And the ideas for the deals, they're not necessarily bad. But we gotta give this thing back. Amarillo. And when you guys went to that board and said, "Wait a minute, that doesn't, ah, that doesn't feel right. You asked for 100, you gave him 750." The response from the board should've been, "Okay, whatever, whatever you need to know, however open, we need to open the doors. Whatever, however far we have to go." And 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 I'm afraid that the, I've gotten a lot of input from people, a lot of criticism, a lot of, frankly, listen, three weeks ago, three Amarillo companies called and picked up the phone and fired people at Fairly Group. One of them was a client we'd had for 30 years. Every guy in town like us, and I don't own Fairly Group anymore, so, didn't affect me in any way financially. In fact, it hurt my guys who I worked there with. And the people said, "These are accounts that everyone in town has wanted for 30 years and no one can get them. They can't beat us." So, an account like that, with a relationship that deep, says, "We don't like Alex's politics about the EDC." Listen, I'm the only guy not playing politics. I haven't made one statement publicly about the EDC. I would love to tell people why we parted ways with Kevin Carter. But, and some of those conversations even eked back because some people told what they thought. And they eat back to even employees at the EDC. And their version of who Alex Fairly is and what we're doing. But I'm gonna tell you that we're wrestling something away from influence that I don't think has been healthy for it forever. And I could go really into a lot more detail. And this is just a, this is a hard one. Like, I don't wanna say this one. I don't even wanna talk about this. I'm not gonna have a deep debate with somebody. I'm not gonna share the things that I knew. But what I'm gonna say is that the EDC has to be accountable to the whole of Amarillo and it ought to be accessible to the whole of Amarillo. Any Joe ought to be able to come in and say, "Hey, I got an idea, would you listen to me?" Any Joe ought to get to do that. I, we have a deal that we did, that someone said to me, "That was a bad deal." Someone in the EDC, "That was a bad deal, we shouldn't have done it. It was because we were afraid of this guy who's an outsider guy, he's never been on the EDC board." I was in conversations negotiating, trying to resolve the Range deal with people who aren't on the EDC board, trying to get those people to give the money back. And I had people say, acknowledge to me, "We run the EDC, they are not on the EDC board." Look, I'm sorry, that's a painful thing for our community. I don't wanna create a bunch of drama about it, but we gotta, we gotta give this thing back to normal people. And part of the reason why I say this is, if I'm gonna be involved in going forward, we need a, we need a regular board of people. Smart people, people who will think outside the box, people have the courage to take the arrows. But the EDC can't be the slush fund for the few. It just can't. I can't be involved, I won't be involved in that. And I think, listen, there's been so many good things done. The EDC isn't a disaster, but there's a group of people who, when they want something done, they go to the EDC and they have a higher percentage chance of getting something done than I do, or you do, or anybody sitting out here does. And we just need to, we just need to stop that going forward. And that'll release the EDC, I think, to go and do more and be better. So, all right, I'm gonna pause here. I have a few things on a next step slide, but I know that's a lot and I don't know what, you know, folks were expecting. But I would say overall, I think the EDC can be incredible. Like, I think the EDC can be more productive in the next five years than the last 15 years. We have all these, I think we will, I think we'll recruit the best EDC director ever. We have a lot for that person to sell and we have, and we're very flush and we have a lot of money coming in every year and we have some incredible, there's nothing but positive things in our future about the EDC. But I do think that starting over with a fresh board and getting to take a fresh, hard look at it, I think it's gonna be a, I think it's gonna be in a corner that we look back on in five years and say, "We turned a corner in that tough time." And I, for one, am appreciative that you guys, even you didn't all agree. Like, you didn't all agree, like, that's frankly great. But I think what you've done and what you caused to happen and allowed to happen and that you stuck with and didn't give up until we started to get some answers. And listen, people can decide what they think about what I think about that. I'm not, I promise you, this isn't a bullseye answer. I might be on the next ring out, or I may even be two rings out. People can take this and look at it and pick at it, and I'm sure people will. But I think there's a way forward and a future of the EDC that is, it's full of responsibility to the people who give us the money and full of taking advantage of what I think are huge opportunities that we have because of, you know, because of where we live and how amazing the people we live with are at creating economy and jobs. And so, I'm only positive, and I'll just go ahead and go to the next slide because the first thing on it is my commitment. I did tell Cole I didn't wanna do this and you guys kinda did it anyway. I thought it would be until maybe January, February. I will, we've lost our person, I think we need a new person. I would be happy to stay the rest of the year. I don't feel good about bailing, although I do feel good about having been so candid with you about where I am. So that if you guys are looking at me saying, "This guy's full crazy, we need to get him off the board, you can meet after this and you can take him off the board." But I wouldn't, if you would like me to go on, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying, "Well, good luck with this. I kinda ratted some things out and..." I think we have to pick a board. I don't know if you wanna, if you wanna set a permanent board before or after we pick a new person. That's up to you. We obviously have to begin a CEO search and in reality, we've really started that. Doug has already put together the beginnings of a RFP to go out into the, you know, into that world and find a search firm. I can tell you I have some different opinions about what our new CEO should look like, different than how it's looked in the past. We have some policies to work on. I put the other two because I don't know what they are. I just don't like to leave a meeting without saying, "What are we gonna do next?" So I'll take a breath.
Brutal. Brutally honest, personal, raw, real, open. So for that, I thank you. Uncomfortable. Easily criticized for not being professional, polished, pre-baked and brought out where all you guys can feel good about it. So for that, I say thank you. I don't think you can deal with a problem that you won't speak to or call it what it is. The best way to move forward is turn the lights on and be honest and deal with it. And I know my public and I know the community here. I know the respect that they have for this and I know that they understand and still live in reality. Some of the world chooses not to. They live on Facebook, which is not real. And they wanna play pretend with their lives. We don't do that here, that's why I like and love living here. I wanna fix it. I'm looking for leadership and good, strong team members. And you've brought everything out and you're asking one good question and this is the bottom line, how do we change the culture in the AEDC? But that's just, that's just representative here of how do we change the culture in our city? And how do we change the culture in the nuclear family? How do we change the culture in our values? And we don't just do that by running forward into the darkness. We do that by being willing to go backwards and to see like, what are, let's evaluate and analyze ourselves. Let's be honest. And so we've done that here today. And I know the news is gonna report and like, it's brutal, but it's needed. And so, thank you for your honesty and your openness. Man, I had a ton of questions, I don't even know to ask them now. Because I'm hung up on the question of, you know, how do we change the culture here? Counsel, you have anything for Mr. Fairley?
I got a few comments I'd like to put forth. I appreciate the honesty. We put a spotlight on a problem. We put a spotlight on a problem, and to be truthful, we've always gotta have a spotlight on every committee we have in this city. I think we ran a very lax organization. We appoint committees, but we don't hold anybody responsible. And until we, as leaders of this city, hold all committees responsible to the, uh, City Council, we're gonna have these problems arise. The thing I see is, I sort of would like to know, what is the average growth for a community? Is it 1.5, 1.7? But I'd like to know, what do we get? Do we get, break the average by spending millions of dollars? Or are we just floating in the ocean for life best? From economic development, from what I can see here, we almost would be better off to give each citizen the money we're spending here and say, "At the end of the day, if you spend your money in the city of Amarillo, we're gonna create economic development." Would we create more by just giving the money back? Or letting the people have the money theirself? These are questions I think we need to answer. We can't just keep going around and taking money and not seeing any good out of it. I know I work hard every day, I pay my taxes, but then when I see we're paying taxes and not getting anything out of it, that's not good. And I appreciate Mr. Fairly and the board that we've appointed for bringing a spotlight to this, and I think we need a good, strong board, a board that's gonna stand up and say, "This is wrong," and instead, just accepting, we, we've been accepting bad deals for a long time. And until we stop accepting bad deals, we got a problem. And I, I, I think we need to really, really work hard on this. And I'd like to see us go through each committee that we have and ask these questions of each we, every one of them. This isn't just, we just can't continue to accept mediocrity. And that's what we've been doing in Amarillo for a number of years. And I don't like saying the things I'm saying, but I think they need to be said. Mr. Fairly gave a very good assessment, and we need to live with it. That's all I got for now. One more thing. This all came about through the Range questions. And what do we do about the Range? Do, I, I think we need my money back. I think the taxpayers want their money back. I don't think this is a place that we just go around giving money 'cause somebody makes a phone call and says, "I need $750,000." That's not right. Never has been, never will be. Because that $750,000 comes out of each and every person's pocketbook here today. And we allow it to happen, why? Because we guys have a strong voice that says, "Y'all are wrong." And that's what we gotta do. So, that's where I'm at right now. I, I would like to say, "I want my money back." And I think the people want the money back. Thank you, Mr. Fairly. You did a good job. I think we need to work forward to get, and what's due us.
Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. Fairly, for the report. Along, along lines of Tom, you know, do you have any suggestion on the Range issue as far as what to do?
Yeah, the Range issue is, man, it's just tough. And, uh, mostly what we need is, we need it to be able to get, put to bed. That's mostly what we need. I mean, if you talk about just the basic, simple things that we know, there's really no dispute about. The Range came, the, the, the idea of the Range, it was called something else, eventually became recognized as the Range, uh, to people in the EDC. Some of this is things Kevin told me in the first person to a couple of board members. And they spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, um, inside the EDC with EDC money to hire a consultant to, you know, kinda check it out. And it was, it was, it was basically patterned after one of these that exists in Lubbock, I mean, excuse me, in Midland. And it's one that operates in the, in there, in that world, it's in the oil business. It's very successful. There's one key difference in it and ours, and I'll get to it in a minute, but spent a couple hundred thousand dollars, decided to go ahead and do, to do it, they create the entities outside. Um, about that time, the couple board members, you know, one, of course, was Ms. Street, she's been public about that, but another one, they rolled off, it's just time for them to roll off. And before they go, they ask the council for a hundred thousand dollars, um, for it. And when they, when they get out there, that entity that had consulted them and told them, um, how they ought to do things, happened to be the entity that they decided should run it. And the, the deal was $50,000 a month. Well, a year at $50,000 is $600,000. And they spent about a hundred thousand dollars on a logo and marketing and creating their brand and those kinda things, and Ms. Street makes a call back to her old board members and, and asks for, you know, that money. And two board members got together and told Kevin, and he sent the money. No board meeting, nothing official. And, um, the reason it's lingered this long is 'cause it, it doesn't matter, I don't know if it was legal or not, like, I'm not a lawyer. Talk to lawyers who think it was legal, talk to lawyers who think it wasn't legal. The reason it lea- the reason it lingers is 'cause it just doesn't pass common, normal people's common sense smell test. It just doesn't, it just doesn't. And, um, today I get Facebook ads from them that are telling me how great the Range is. I, I personally can't really figure out what the Range does or what they're gonna do. Some of our money is paying lobbyists in Austin where they're asking for appropriations from the state. Um, in 2023, um, they raised, I think, they had $290,000 in income. We gave them 250, the cit- the EDC, so they raised 40, but I think they paid a, a person who raises money, I think, 70. I don't know how you pay 70 to raise 40. Um, it, it doesn't look very tight. The biggest difference in it and the Midland operation is the, the, the panhandle ag community has not embraced it. The reason the one in Midland works is 'cause those oilmen give that organization millions of dollars. And the key isn't the millions, the key is that the, the industry has embraced that entity and said, "Yeah, come here and be in the middle of us, and let's," all the things the Range says, and, and up here, that has not happened in our ag industry. And that's my biggest question about, about how it's gonna go. But no matter how it's gonna go, if it's gonna be great, if it's gonna be nothing. In my opinion is, this issue isn't gonna go away until we resolve it. And I think, I think the people, I don't want this to be too tough, but I think the people who did the deal, I think the Range needs to give the money back. I think as a community, like, I, I was involved in some discussions about this, and I was, I was talking to these folks, and I was saying, "Could we, could you just give the money back?" And we basically made a deal that, that facilitated the giving of the money back that wouldn't cost them anything. It, it was gonna include a banker lending them money to give the money back. And then someone offered to pay the interest on the loan until they could get it back year by year by year. And ultimately, the president of the Range said no, because he wanted to be sure that he was gonna get the money back from the EDC later. The only way the Range issue is gonna be resolved is if those people who did the deal give the money back. And I don't think we will have the, the public's trust, what we really need back, the reason I was involved in trying to help it get done was, 'cause we need the public to trust the EDC. That, that's what we need, like, it's public money. It's their money, it's your money, it's your neighbor's money, it's my kid's money, it's, it, it, it's everyone's money. A few people who just drive through town, it's their money. And we need the community to trust it again. And, and, and that's the only way I think that gets, I, I think that's the only way it ever gets resolved. And the folks we're talking about, the couple board members who met and agreed to do the deal without talking to the rest of their board or having a meeting, and, and the couple board members o- over at the EDC, there's only a couple, there's only a couple. We have a president, and we have, you know, Ms. Street, I don't know what she is. Kevin's not on the board anymore, I don't know what happened. Called Kevin two months ago and said, "Hey, could you go to the Range and get this from me?" He said, "I can't get it, I'm not on the board anymore." I said, "Well, wha- 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 how'd that happen?" Kevin said, "I don't know, they just called me, sent him off the board." I said, "Did, did, did they tell you why you're off the board?" He said, "No, they didn't really tell me." "Why?" I said, "Did you ask?" "Nah, they just sent him off the board." Listen, i- i- people are just smarter than that. And, and, and ultimately, I, those folks could do it like, like, they could do it like very easily. I- i- it's not like me asking the mayor for a quarter million dollars, it's asking me, asking the mayor for a thousand dollars. And, and he, he could give that back, and I ultimately, I don't want it to be harsh, I don't want it to be tough, I frankly offered to put up my own funds to help facilitate getting this to go away so that we could move on, but I think that those folks, one of them, one of them, one of them is running for mayor. And, and, and in that role, we'll, we'll, we'll select the next board of the EDC. We gave them $750,000, and we're still in the third year of our deal with them, and we can't get them to give us financials. I think those folks need to set it right. I think they need to go home, I think they just need to divide it by four, write a check, and let's put this thing to bed and be done with it.
So, thank you for that statement. Let me redirect our discussion here for the rest of this today, away from anything that's politics, because we do have different people that are signed up, and we don't ever wanna use a microphone, um, in that capacity. What we focused on thus far is the truth, uh, transparency, honesty, and, and the numbers. And so, I wanna continue to focus on that. Here's what I would like to do. Um, you have my commitment, um, I'll stay in here with you. I'm super grateful for everything you've done, you've engaged far, far more and deeper than I ever expected, um, in trying to help and just put this back on the, the road. And, and, you know, quite frankly, we've been sideswiped over and over again, uh, as we continue to just try to put this back on the road and do the good people of Amarillo rightly. I'd like to offer a contract compliance review as a step. I think that a lot of what we're missing is just being able to go back and review some of those contracts and just see where we're performing and where we're not. Um, and the reason I offer this is because today is your opinion. Though it's a very educated opinion, it's researched and you've delivered it in a professional way, and the majority of us in Amarillo will receive it because it is so raw and real, it's still just an opinion. Um, what we need is, we need to do that compliance review and see in those contracts, where are those, uh, compliances, where are they performing? Have those clawbacks been, um, in place? Are, are we, are we still failing? And so, with this, this would be like, you know, opening the wound and never really sanitizing it, you know, before we sew it back up. And so, like, you've opened a wound here, we get that, we understand it, we know it's needed. Um, we need to go ahead and, and disinfect, and we need to do the thorough cleanse before we sew this thing back up so we can heal correctly. And so, if you, if you want the public's trust back, you're gonna have to, to walk that out, and, and the first step in there would be a, a contract compliance review. And so, I would ask for that from this council. That can be facilitated on the board at the AEDC level, you guys can pick who you wanna do it. We, we don't have to give direction of that, other than we think that this could be a sampling, maybe you don't need to go through every contract, but you need to sample, um, so that you have something that you can bring back. Um, the other thing is, is, uh, if you've named an interim director, I'd love to report on that today, uh, if you're, if you're entertaining search firms, um, I think that that's important because that key leader is who you're gonna build, uh, kind of on top of. And, and the vision, um, if you're willing to stay committed, I'm, I'll, I'll give you my nomination, um, and, and would love to keep you in. Now, I, I would like to get our other two council members, I would like to see them come back to the dais, but the last time I proposed that, they said, you know, "We, we need to stay down here a little bit longer." And so, we are now still waiting to, to hear from you guys on when you feel would be an appropriate exit for us to place at least two more board members and, and potentially, um, three, uh, or four, depending on whether you accept or, or I get a second. So, um, that is not on the schedule here today, so I'm not asking for that. But I am willing to tell you, like, what I'm willing to do, and, and those next steps that I think are very important. So, I would ask, uh, Tips and Kraft, do you guys have a better, uh, outlook in an ETA right now, or do you still need more time to evaluate?
I think, today we discussed the bylaws, uh, we discussed some of the changes, I think that that's what we wanted to have in place, uh, for sure, to have that done. We discussed the search firm. So, I don't think that we necessarily need to be a part of choosing the new one as we move forward. Now, Alex and I are gonna be on a committee, um, evaluating the search firms and doing that type deal, uh, which I think is gonna be helpful. We had the discussion today of whether I need to be on the board or don't need to be on the board, I don't know that it matters, but we came to, is that correct?
Yeah, I think we think that by the time you guys set a new board, we'll be down the road on a, on a search firm, and not in a rut, but we also appointed Doug Nelson to be the interim CEO today.
So, so, yeah. Uh, I think Kraft, and we hadn't talked about it necessarily, but I think we're, we're almost there. I mean, probably, our next meeting is March 17th, March 17th at 9:00 AM, I think, is what we decided. I think by then, we should be really pretty close. Would you agree?
I agree, yeah. I think once we can get that final policy document we discussed today in the meeting from Doug, he says the change has already been made, I just wanna visualize them. I would say after the meeting in March, um, we're done.
Real good. So I'm looking at the March calendar, the 13th and the 27th are those Thursdays, the Tuesday would be the 11th and the 25th. Ms. City Secretary, do we know, have we confirmed the 11th and the 25th for city council meetings? Um, and the only reason I ask is just 'cause of spring break, just making sure that didn't throw anything off. So, you guys are meeting again on the 17th?
Seventeenth.
So, could we tentatively, uh, shoot for a goal of the 25th of being in a position to place, uh, permanent board members of March?
Yeah, I think so, and I mean, I think a comment that I wanna make, now that we, I think we all understand this, but going through this, uh, what Josh and I have gone through is seeing the importance of this board, uh, you know, how much, what it requires, uh, what we're gonna need to move forward, if we're gonna change the culture, which I think it starts with the head, you know, when we choose a president, we had a good discussion today about that, of, you know, maybe where they need to come from and where they don't need to come from. But the importance of us five on council of choosing that board, and how important those people are, that it's not really just an honorary position, but this is, this is gonna require a lot of help, and also to come alongside Mr. Fairly, uh, to help rebuild that culture.
Same, Kraft?
Agree.
Okay. Um, Mr. Fairly, do you, do you have any opinion on looking at that goal of the 25th of March?
Yeah, I think, I think that's great, and I think we'll, I think by then, we, at a minimum, we'll have an RFP out for a search firm, and I think we'll be, we'll be getting answers back by then, so we, we won't waste the time until you set a new board, we'll, we'll take it up, and we'll be ready to go when that new board gets here.
Make it a clarification, Mayor. Originally, we had y'all discussing this, the meeting before you selected them. Do you still want a discussion, that meeting before?
Counsel, do y'all still wanna discuss potential, uh, nominees? Or do you guys wanna go ahead and remove that from the, was that the next agenda that you had it on?
It would've been on the, for this, it would go on March 11th.
Yeah, so, I, I actually would think this council, uh, you can redirect, but the way we've worked thus far is we would discuss on the 11th, and you'd, you'd be prepared to move on the 25th. Uh, I don't know that a, a discussion on the 11th hurts anything, do I have any opposition to leaving that on? Okay, that way, we've, I know we've all had plenty of time to, to interview that and, uh, decide really on who we think is, is the, uh, the individual or individuals that we'd like to see serve there, and so, you guys bring that ready on the 11th, and then we, we should be ready to, to put put the permanent board together on the 25th, we'll have the bylaws finalized, uh, the policies, the procedures. I would encourage, um, the contract compliance review to, to start, um, right after that. And I think it's, I think it's a good, slow walk in the right direction.
Who does the contract review? Do we, do we do it? Do we hire someone?
I would leave that up to you guys, but I'm sure, um, you know, law, law firm would be the, would be the place to take that. So, you'd pick a, a law firm that's very, um, experienced in EDC and contracts and, and let them look at those.
I will say, just as a comment, I, I have high, high confidence in our contracts. I think that, I think the team does a great job on them, but I think it's a fair thing to take a look at them.
Um, Counsel, do I have anything else that anybody would like to, uh, comment on or add to here before we, we wrap this up? Nothing at all? Mr. Fairley, any closing remark?
No, sir. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Man, we appreciate everybody for sitting in here. Uh, it looks like NFL game day out here because we are bundled up and it is cold. Um, so, thank you guys for an uncomfortable meeting, and I know this was uncomfortable in more than one way. And I appreciate your willingness to, to remain patient and let us walk this out the right way. And, uh, I'm not asking for your trust, but I know that if you give us an opportunity to just walk this out, that, um, you won't regret the, the diligence and the hard work put form, put forth by this team. So, thank you guys for being here today. Uh, that concludes our meeting, you're adjourned.